We'll start our work session. The first item is the review, review of the city investment funds and policy ordinance. And Lee is the wizard of that.
Well, I've got some inviting guests online as well who are true wizards behind helping me formulate this policy as well as will be my advisors as we move forward if you do choose to adopt this new ordinance. So the city in the past has never had investment or investment policy ordinance, never had really a need to have one. So unfortunately, we are approaching a point where we need to start thinking about this, especially as we start amassing funds in the beach preservation fund, which is currently at about six million dollars once you kind of lump everything together. And then as we start putting together new funds in the general unobligated, we certainly need to have that invested conservatively as well. So with that, I'll certainly open the field up to questions if there's any questions that council members may have, either myself or the gentleman who are online right now. Can you all hear us?
We got Joe. We can't hear Joe.
They're all muted.
Oh, they are? Okay, yeah.
Go on, Joe.
I'll let them do quick introductions if you all.
I'm sorry. I'm off mute.
Okay, yeah, if you, if you both want to introduce yourselves, please, please let them know who you are and your affiliation with, I guess, Truist now. It used to be BB and T, now it's Truist. That's who we bank with.
It reads like most of it just comes out of state statute.
We are governed by state law primarily, and yes, we comply with that, and we also have our own official standards that are a little bit more constrictive beyond what the state requires. It's very conservative investments, a Class A rating or better. Domestic, we don't dabble in any international where it's kind of exchange traded international funds like that. So it's very conservative. Are you able to get a hold of a cat, are they able to hear us?
I'm not sure.
Charles, Charles, are you out there or Mr. Bloomberg?
Looks like they're muted. Their little microphones.
Yeah.
They are muted, but I don't know if they're away from their desk or not. One of them.
Okay, okay. So we have a new banker, I don't know if any of you, Duncan McGugan, he actually just retired a month ago. He was our senior, a senior banker, been with BB and T for many, many years, and he was actually the gentleman who helped kind of shepherd me along when I first joined the city back in 2014. He just retired and handed the reins over to Charles Dugan, who's a vice president in charge of our accounts. So he's helped kind of connect different people to performance in BB and T, which is now Truist, which is a large bank, and they have an investment side. Mr. Bloomberg has been contactively been talking with him. He's helping with the investment side of the house as well as some of his associates.
It's rolling investments, so you make them at different times, so they mature at different times? What's the total investment amount after five years, whenever the investment cycle's reported?
Right, so they call it investment laddering is the common jargon. Basically, what we're looking at is every three years, have a full cycle of the funds. So in any given time, we won't have, say, the full six million invested. It'll be, well, if we have your six million invested, you won't have the maturity date of the full six million in any one given time.
Two billion, go extra million, go extra million.
Every year, you'll have to roll over and then reinvest it in another installation of millions of funds. That being said, the investments that we are looking at are highly liquid and very marketable. So in the event that we did have an instance where, okay, the core engineers comes back and magically we need to come up with funds within a few weeks or even a few days, we certainly could amass those and sell them. Certainly, you know, would be ideal, but as far as the core engineers and the timing that it requires for them, we're going to know a year in advance we're going to need the funds. So we'll be able to do that in a strategic manner as opposed to here. Yeah, and basically, my anticipation is, once we get comfortable with the beach preservation fund cycle, we'll start to initiate a general fund, you know, unobligated fund investment cycle. We'll have much like it. Right now, it's miniscule percent just because of the way the markets are, but as the investment environment changes and percentages do increase, this will certainly be more of a growing concern. The nice thing is, and what one thing they pointed out to me in our discussions of this plan, it's essentially, we're in the same investment grades and types of investments as the local government investment pool, which the state treasurer's office runs, which we participate in, that you all gave the green light, I think it's been a little over a year ago, to invest 500,000 of our beach preservation funds in the local government investment pool. It has performed just like any other market, or the investment percentages have decreased since initial involvement. What the BB and T now Truist, that those folks are doing are basically cherry picking the investments that they kind of deal with, and on top of that, they're not going to be charging the same management, portfolio management as the local government investment pool is. So we'll actually be able to reap that benefit as well. So it's slightly better for us, and certainly more hand on, I appreciate that too, as opposed to just throwing your money into the pool and let somebody else manage it. You don't really much say over it, other than when to pull in, put money in and put money out. So the reason that they could do that, you know, point a question, well, what's the incentive? Why do you want to do this? Banks actually have investment size of the house. Basically, they're able, the more money that they can pull into their investment side gives, opens more doors for them on the market as far as dealing with investment houses, right? So the more money that you have amassed, that you have control over, they're able to exert that influence in such a way as you can garner better deals for themselves on the banking side, if that makes sense. So having that six million dollars of funds that normally would just be sitting in one of their bank accounts, that's, you know, essentially is part of our portfolio, and now move that six million to their portfolio for their management, and now that they, like, those funds has their own, under their management, so.
So what's the incentive to us?
The incentive to us.
That's the incentive to them.
So the incentive to us is the, there is no portfolio management fees that we're currently having to pay our other local government investment pool, and the other one, the other really nice thing is, we'll be establishing a relationship with the investment managers so that we can better fine tune our investments, so they can kind of help us cherry pick as we, as these ladders come due every two years, we can reassess the portfolio and say, or even if, for me said, you know, we have major market fluctuations, we're in heavy on some investment that just doesn't have a really good outlook, we can get you out of that and we'll push you in something else.
If that makes sense to some.
That will fall into my hands under their advisement, and that's the way this policy works.
Where do we, sorry, where was it with the half million, that was a year ago? You said it kind of went down, so.
It, the investment, well, we didn't lose any money, but we did not gain as much as we could. So something like, so you'll actually see in your beach preservation tab of your, of your buyers, it's really a bunch for a half million dollars, it should have been.
What should have been?
You would like, so the local government investment pool is actually the performer that these guys are challenged to beat, and they, they've said that they could comfortably do that, that they're kind of cherry picking as opposed to some of the blankets stuff that they do, and it not having the overall management fee. So I think LGIP was something at, oh, gosh, I keep looking at previous months. It was doing something like less than half a percent, something like point, I'll say point three, point oh two five.
For six million dollars, what do you anticipate us making annually?
For six million? They actually have a projection, which I was hoping they'd show us. The current market, they're probably looking along lines of like point seven, point eight percent. It's not, nothing huge, because it's constricted with our very conservative investments, so it's not like we're out here, you know, shortening and calling stocks or anything like that, so.
So it's a greater rate of return to greater amount of bank accounts, but it's still not keeping up with inflation?
Nothing is, nothing is, unless you, unless you're accept, going to accept a level of risk that the city should.
Right, so you said no advisory fees, no loads, full compensation transparency, every way that they could make money, they have to dispose it to us?
Yep, and it's, it's a banking relationship too, so it's a, you know, that's not the only thing we're doing with them, right? So we've got all of our own funds invested with this bank as well, so it's, you know, obviously, you want to do right by us, just because of the banking relationship.
Is it fiduciary relationship, or are they acting as fiduciaries, where they have to act in our best interest, or are the advisors where?
Um, yeah, I, both, right, so they're, they are, they are taking control of our funds, and we're investing, and they're advising as well, so, yeah.
Do we know what Truist leverage ratio is? Could they answer that? If you could just ask them, they would know it.
That, you'd say?
It'll leverage ratio?
Oh, sure. I can ask them, yeah, sure. Now, all of our banking assets that we have in bank accounts are guaranteed with AAA rating.
Okay.
They're required as collateral, they pledge, and they have to meet that per law, and I get those statements every, we, every month. Now, with these, a little bit different, right, because these are investments, so, but these will be A rated or better.
Okay.
There we are. And then the policy kind of spells out some of the ethics, how certain scenarios would be covered, how the finance officer would be responsible for the management of these. It's not, it's not shoved off completely to the bank, and I never have any say in it. It's certainly a, they come to me, or I come to them, and the decision is finally made between myself, and certainly there's sometimes maybe I have conflict of interest or something after a judge. That's pretty much it.
Anything else? Anybody else have any questions?
And this is just the first reading, and then you'll have a second reading on June, June eighth. I'm sorry you all couldn't meet our bankers, but if you ever have any questions or want to meet those gentlemen, they're very nice and very helpful, and certainly would love to answer any questions you might have, so.
Thank you. The next item is moratorium on short-term rental business licenses.
All right. Perfect time.
I'll give this back to you, Mayor Goodwin.
No, okay.
They're all asleep, they're up at the set.
Well, you up first?
Yeah, that's why they're on their own.
Well. All deserve a break, yeah, all right.
So, before we get started, I know one of the questions that's come up since this was introduced is why and why now? So for the why section, I want to start, you guys can flip to page 108, sorry, it's not in the work session, I have to see the regular meeting back, but it's the actual ordinance itself, the whereas sections. The why is why we're here, is because in 2015, when we did our ten-year comprehensive plan, a theme was that rentals have an impact on the community and the city needs to study them. So we did that in 2018. We did a pretty, I think, a good job and a comprehensive job of looking at rentals, looking at what the community wanted to do to regulate rentals at that time, and we ended up regulating what we call externalities, the noise, the loud music, the special events, the rental tri-ordinance, to kind of make sure that rentals were functioning in a way that didn't disrupt the neighborhood in terms of noise, trash, parking, that sort of thing. At that time, we specifically, we did not look at geographic restrictions on rentals, we did not look at the number of rentals, all those just weren't part of the conversation in 2018. So since then, the number of rentals has continued to grow on the island, we have approximately, and these are rough numbers, almost 300 more, 250 more rentals now than we did in 2018. Along with the rentals, we've heard, we don't have any hard data to back this up, but we've heard the same talk, people talk that short-term, our long-term rentals are going away, there's no more affordable rentals on the island, they're all being displaced by short-term rentals. We've seen people come in and pull building permits for single-family houses that are actually rentals. So we know that the number of rentals are increasing, and maybe now there are different issues with rentals than there were in 2018. And the specific thing that kind of prompted staff to say, maybe it's time to do that normal planning process where you make a plan, you evaluate it, and you make changes if necessary, was the recent approval by the DRB of two rental-specific projects in the commercial district that have been approved by the DRB. They're fully legal, they meet the zoning, the owner of those properties did nothing wrong, he just did what he's entitled to do. But where Rose Hardware used to be, is going to be a large single-family home and a duplex, and on the lot side of the low life, that's another large single-family home and a duplex, all fully allowing the zoning. They're going to be massive zoning maxed out, short-term rentals. And much like Wiki Wiki, which was fully entitled to do what they did under the zoning, when we saw these come to the DRB, we said, wow, you know, this is really an example of how short-term rental has the highest and best use of a property looks in reality. We've seen the lots behind the crap shack go up to beat rentals, the complex, the highway, I might like, you know, only Hudson, with the barn-shaped roof on the back, that flipped over to rentals. So we're actually seeing physical changes that are happening in the commercial district and throughout the island, where short-term rentals are undoubtedly the highest and best use of any property on the island. That's a good thing or a bad thing, that's up to you guys to decide, but that's the why, why this is being presented. So what exactly is being presented at this time is a six-month moratorium on new licenses. And when we say new licenses, we maybe can tweak the words, it's really on allowing new properties previously unrented or previously unlicensed properties to get licenses. There are specific exemptions that if you had a 2020 license and you haven't renewed it this year, you still be able to renew it. If you have renewed or do renew, you can sell and transfer the ownership of that property, the license goes with the property, the new owners can get it. So no one who has a real now would be shorted in this pause, they would be able to keep and maintain and sell the licenses. Will sell the properties when you want them to get licenses, that's normal, and also in recognition that people have relied on our zoning and what they can do to make plans. Anyone who's gotten approval from the DRB would be exempted, and they would be allowed to get licensed, and also anyone who come in and before the ordinance is passed, apply for license to rent a soon-to-be existing rental. For those folks who have pulled building permits or about to pull permits based on their reliance on our zoning, allowing short-term rentals, we would let them still come in and get licensed. So basically, if you have a property that has been legally licensed, it's business as usual. If you want to sell it, you can sell it, just like you've always been able to, the new owners can get licenses. If you are building or about to build a house, you can get a license to rent it, because when you bought it and you wrote the city, and just how it rented, and you said yes, then you know you can rely on that. So that would just be a six-month pause on new licenses with those exceptions. And meantime, we'd set up a committee to kind of revisit the idea of short-term rentals, to find out what any new restrictions we'd want to make on licenses going forward. All this is, it's just a proposal, the period of moratorium is debatable, and it doesn't have to be six months, it could be three months or nine months. The date that the ordinance is ratified is changeable, legally, you only have to give it seven days, you can wait until the June meeting to give everyone 30 days between now and then to come in and get their rental licenses, you could wait 10 days or 15 days. So, you know, there are things that obviously are up for debate and discussion now and at the meeting, but the basic proposal as is, is no new property's license for a period of six months, beginning on the day this is ratified, whatever date that might be.
Basically, the way this is sit right this minute, the only person who wouldn't be covered for a license as it sits today is the people who are thinking about buying a lot, or thinking about buying a house to make short-term rentals, that haven't done anything at all. You know, if I come to you and say, Mr. Green, I want to buy your house, and you say, sure, you don't have a license, but I want to buy it for rent, you could go apply for a license and it's transferable from you to me. So, I mean, there's, there's all kind of ways, it just doesn't stop people who already vested in that process. It stops people who come in that aren't vested at all, or thinking about, haven't done anything at all, so.
I've spoken with, with Tim last night and some of you guys over the last couple days, and then reading a bunch of emails this morning that I've received, you know, I think six months is a little long. I thought Elton's, one point in one email was, you know, it takes two to three months for a contract to go through, so I think three months is, if we're going to do a moratorium, three months is more appropriate, just because that kind of kicks us in the butt to get something done and check on things and do something before it holds up any other process. We addressed a lot of these issues in 2018, a lot of the nuisance issues we have addressed. To me, the only thing left that we need to talk about is just a balance. We don't want to lose community character, we don't want to become 90% vacation rentals. You know, we don't want to lose residents on the island to vacation rentals every time, and you just have a very small number of full-time residents. I think that's the last peg that we need to, that we need to climb, and that can easily be done in three months if we even need a moratorium at all. Those are just kind of the vaults of my thoughts over the last 24 hours.
Yeah, I give you the moratorium just because you need, you need to be able to take a deep breath and sit back and say, okay, you know, I'm not in a rush to do anything for X number of days, but we got to get it done in X number of days.
Right.
Whatever that be, six months, nine months, three months. But, you know, and nothing, you know, this, this, this committee and council could run the whole decade from doing like Mount Pleasant did, say, the whole city, we're only going to have 400 short-term rentals, the whole city of Mount Pleasant, or you could do like you did downtown in Charleston, where you have to actually live in that house if you want to do a short-term rental. It's more like a bed and breakfast setup, and then if you get into a historic, the historic district, the house, according to Mr. Pope, who I'm sure he knows, because he's had to put up with it down there, the house actually has to be 50 years old before you can have a short-term rental license, even where you're living. So, you know, there's, there's a gamut of things that people's done out there, and there's a gamut of things that other islands and other island communities have done, and you looked at it and come back with some recommendations, so that's kind of where we is right now. And the balance is really the biggest driving factor is, you know, if you got 2,000 houses that have short-term rental licenses, you're kind of into a saturation mark here, and we need to look at, where do we want that to go? Do we want to just let it go tip all over and go, or do we want to try to control something?
I think it's great to sit down and think about all of the options, because there are many, probably some that we haven't even come up with yet, as far as how to find that happy spot that works for residents and for homeowners. I don't, you know, maybe shortening it to three months moratorium, or maybe just not a moratorium, but committing to having something done in, you know, a certain amount of time, you know, to study all of the different options and, you know, like, I think people see the word moratorium and it makes them very uncomfortable, you know, even, you know, residents, long-term residents, you know, and think, oh, God, what is that going to mean? So definitely speeding it up can help, you know, relieve some of that, too.
How many full-time, how many, how many residences do we have on the island? We've had 1,019 registered rentals, so where is that percentage-wise? I know about where it is, but.
As of 2020, I'll pull up the emails, we get lists from the accessory's office of all the parcels on the Folly Beach, and whether or not they're classified as 4% residential residences. And I sent out to council earlier today a comparison between 2018 and 2020. Give me one second, I'll pull it up.
Yeah, I can hurry those up.
If you'll allow me to, I'm hearing this. So in 2018, according to the Charleston County accessory's office, there were 1,182 parcels classified as 4% primary residences, and that year, we licensed 769 rentals. In 2020, there were 815 parcels classified by the accessory's office as 4% residential residences, and we licensed 1,019 rentals.
264. Did 2020, what, how many?
815 4% residences and 1,019 licensed.
Is that, that's full-time or is that?
That's full-time.
Okay, what are the part-time residents?
We don't, we don't have the data for not for 6% properties, so this is just a comparison of the number of full-time residents versus the number of rentals.
So we just don't count those at all, or?
In 2018, we had it over, but in 2020, we don't have the 4% though, so I can't even handle it.
So we don't have that data?
It's roughly 2,700 total residential parcels. So 815 full-time and 24.
So we build any new homes since 18?
What?
We've built a lot, I think. I guess what I'm asking is, what's the?
We're poured out of us to build them.
Yeah, yeah, but what's the total number versus rental, you know, as a percentage? Do we have that number?
That's what we just said, what?
Of the new builds you're talking about? Yeah, including new builds, all, all houses.
Probably 2,700 total units.
Okay.
Because 1,019, in 2020, 1,019 rentals and 815 full-time rentals. We don't have data, and this is part of the, if we're studying this, we don't have data on how many of the new houses built since 2018 are 4% properties versus rentals.
And you need to make something clear here, because I had one person write about, those guys are just greedy, y'all just want more money. Because, number one, they were talking about 6% versus 4% property tax. We don't set that, that's Charleston County sets that, Charleston County collects that. Then they went on to talk about the 1% that we added to the accommodation tax. Well, that, I explained it to them, that goes straight into beach revenues, but funds can't be spent or anything else, it's not, we're gathering more money.
If we did, Charleston County would have taken it.
Yeah, it could have.
Yeah, they could have taken that percent if we didn't.
Well, not that 1% because Dick Cromer, who's a fair, I'll posit myself, we're the only two, I'll posit us are the only two people who got in on that, because Charleston County had already taken all they could take before Folly Beach woke up and said, oh, just a few years ago.
Yeah.
We need to get our percentage to, well, they, we got stuck with the backside. But anyway, so the Senate and the House gave us that 1% to place, but with the caveat that it can only be used for beach revenues. So, you know, and as I explained, that helps us create our 15% of whatever it was, the last time, it was $5 million, so, you know, you come up with $5 million bucks, so you have a viable beach, so you have a viable place to rent, because you're paying 6% taxes that tell you you're not living in it, so, you know.
Yeah, well, according to the, I know the comprehensive plan of 2015, short-term rentals account for 13.5% of our taxes, excuse me, they collect 13%, 5% state, 1% local, county schools, Charleston County, state accommodations, Charleston County, and the city of Folly Beach accommodation tax.
And that's, that's not a percentage of our tax collection.
No, 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 it's.
That's what they pay.
That's what they pay, right.
That's what I pay too.
Right. If you stay, if anybody stayed there, yeah, okay.
And to touch on what the mayor said about clients is, I think everyone in this room, and probably the public, understands that short-term rentals do bring in a large amount of funds that come into the city, and so part of our study would be to more accurately quantify that and present back to you guys, you know, the 260 extra rentals that have come online since 2018 are responsible for X number of additional dollars, and so that way, you're able to price out kind of different options later when we talk about reducing them or eliminating them or changing them, you have to be able to quantify that.
You know, you could say, and we, there's, as Councilmember Ray said, there's, there's a lot of stuff you can talk about in the committee that will be talked about, I'm sure. You know, do you keep it at a thousand per year, you know, as this goes back You know, as this goes back and forth to a thousand, or you raise the fifteen hundred per year and you got some extra ones to get out this year? But then, if you want to do it next year and fifteen hundred get bought up, you have to kind of get in line in the lottery system for whoever's next. Don't, don't renew it or sell it, don't take it over with a short-term rental. It would open up one that you could take a lottery pool somewhere, you know, it's kind of like, you know. Kind of like the building permits in Key West, you have to get in the line, take in the lottery.
Yeah, some, some sort of limit, some sort of limit is necessary. I mean, I wish we could limit liquor licenses in a squared distance. And just so you don't have saturation, or you don't want saturation of anything. You know, we don't want to become eighty, ninety percent short-term rentals that just destroys the character of our community and kicks us all out.
Spoken by a man who has his in hand.
What's that?
Spoken by a man who has his in hand.
What?
Your liquor license. You have your liquor license.
Well, I mean, yeah, but even if I didn't, you don't, I don't want to see forty bars out here. I mean, even, but yeah, the competition factor, but just, I just, I don't want to live in a community like this, this small, with forty bars out here. I don't think anybody does. I don't want to live on this island if there's ninety percent vacation rentals. It destroys the wintertime character of the island. I love the off-seasons here, because it's people that live here that hang out all the time and get together for golf cart rides or random things like that, and that, that's the community character to me. We've tried for years to protect community character. We've tried different, different regulations to promote long-term housing, you know, long-term rental affordability and things like that. We've tried a lot of things over the years. Um, and, and it's, some have worked, some haven't. You know, so I mean, preserving community character is one hundred percent in my book. Um, some sort of a ratio is, is, is needed. I don't know where it stands, but I don't, I think six months is a little too long. I don't want to mess anybody else up either. I think we can get plenty done in three months, and I feel sorry for all that committee, because they're gonna have some meetings. Hopefully, it's not me.
I have like.
We're not, we're not a good, we're not gonna stop nobody.
I have like four or five things to say. Um, to be really honest with you, one of the primary issues as a candidate last year was this issue. Live ability, character, quality of life. I honestly have faith in whatever system. Language, you can say respect, you can say pause, we can say postponement, we can say truce, we can say delay, we can say. Language, in my mind today, was where I had to speak to what indeed a moratorium is. I mean, I like tru- uh, parts, whatever, okay, so there's language. The other thing is data-driven decisions. The more the city does qualitative and quantitative data driven by that, it is not personal, it is not specific to any one of us. I love my neighbors. I want everyone to be, I mean, heaven knows, I want everyone to be happy. But there is an issue of driving this through data, quantitative and qualitative, not anecdotal, not the whatever, and we're at that point. The other thing is that I have longed for planned growth, not the growth that plans us, planned growth. To me, this is an opportunity, whatever language, whatever honestly, whatever the, the number is, months, days. It is, I believe, my responsibility to respond to the betterment of folly, and yes, my little tadline, the love of folly, and to just do whatever it is.
One of, a couple more things, just from the comprehensive plan again, and, and kind of springboarding off what DJ was saying, is the number one thing of the strategy was protect natural resources, you know. Uh, a lot of this money that we do collect goes to beach re-nourishment, and well, I think we've done a great, the city's done a great job of, of doing that and, and collecting that, you know. Um, you know, I think in the study, one of the things is, how do we, if we do stop this, how do we replace the growth of the community in funding some of these beach, uh, resources or beach re-nourishments? Uh, protecting community character, uh, which is what DJ was hitting on, uh, and which I agree, uh, we certainly have some, I think there was a balance we have to take in doing this, and enhancing public services. I know we've got our comprehensive plan in development now, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Um, one other thing here that addressed short-term rentals in, in this is number ten on page sixty-nine. Uh, and we have a few pages here, let me read this. Short-term rentals are vital to the economy of Folly Beach, but sometimes create challenges for the community. So, the goal was the city should continue to actively address proper licensing of rentals and document short-term rental issues by monitoring calls to public safety, South Carolina DHEC, or other departments, rentals to determine impact of these uses. Uh, and this is the implementation that was recommended. Conduct an annual review of rental-related issues. Develop a map of short-term rentals and place that list of rental properties on the city webpage. I don't know, I have not seen anything that we have done this over the last six years or.
So, we, we have, um, the, the map exists in our rental tracking software, and the list of rentals was kept on for a while to, uh, not only to let people know who was renting, but services public. And then privacy issues, we took it down, and now we operate personalized rental verification, uh, for folks who want to know if such and such property is a rental and is fully licensed. They're able to call in directly to get that information. We've previously been posted, even though it's public information, we've previously compiled the address, owner's name, and some other information that made it public on the website for a few years.
Right.
And so now, now we do that as a personalized service instead.
And have we reviewed the related issues to public safety or DHEC?
Well, that, that's what more than our two thousand eighteen project has turned into rental strikes.
Right.
And just recently we reviewed.
Yeah, I can.
So, uh, so, since we started this strike program, sixty rental properties have received one or more strikes or rental, or noise complaints.
Okay.
One of them has committed a trigger for four strikes in a six-month period. That property, when we wrote them, told them we removed their license, they sold them. So, we haven't had any other properties receive four strikes.
So, do you think, I mean, the doors are, do you think it's working?
So, I think our, our regulations have limited the amount of people that rentals, that know outdoor music at rentals that strikes. I think that's worked to make rentals less intrusive in the, in the community, but it hasn't worked to slow down the number of rentals.
So, is the number bad? I mean, I know there's a certain number when we hit. I don't know what that number is. And I, you know, but, but my main concern was the livability, so as soon as what we've done.
I think what we've done is made it a good, a good fight, and, and, and special event houses, and no other, it costs, it may cost special event houses. So, rentals may be quieter and run more smoothly, but there, there are more of them anyway.
From my perspective, um, I definitely think the more, the more public input we have, the better. I don't know, back to the language comment, as well as the timing comment, um, that it needs to be a moratorium, um, and if it does, the shorter the duration, the better, to keep us on task. I do think that we economically impair the value of some of these properties, um, by virtue of potentially, um, limiting their, their use. Lastly, I do think it's important, and we may not have the ability to sort of bifurcate today, what is short-term rental in the hands of an otherwise perceived resident? Um, somebody who rents four, six, eight, upwards of ten weeks of the year, and they do that to subsidize their retirement income so that they can be a, a neighbor. Um, you know, for all intents and purposes, if one hundred percent of property is on Folly, um, the fine folks that live here and are our friends needed to do that, I, I think we should allow them to do that. So, I do think it's important that we differentiate sort of professional short-term rentals, which are fifty-two weeks of the year, give or take, versus, you know, the fine, our fine neighbors who may have, may choose to rent a couple of weeks a year or need to rent a maximum of ten weeks a year so that they can live with Folly dream. I think it's worth consideration. I, I don't know how we quantify that.
A lot of people that live here, my grandmother, several people, that's how they, they rent it for the first five, six years, they rent their house out, and then they move out here full-time. I think Adam just signed up to be on the committee, by the way. Great points.
On behalf of, it's an important issue.
Let's move on here for a second, and we, we need some more discussing.
Committee.
Get to the next couple of things, but, you want to introduce?
Yeah, and yes, I apologize if I do this. Before we started that, um, related to business licenses, and we'll be hearing much more from her in the future, is I'd like to introduce you guys to Miss Amberly Flowers. Amberly is our new, uh, business license official and permit coordinator. Um, she has currently been one manning the permit and business license office since the beginning of March. She's done a tremendous job dealing, dealing with the backlog and, and their efficient processing. And if you guys saw the permit before, it went out of last week's staff report, Amber managed to get out, it was a hundred and sixteen permits, or a hundred and sixty-six. And that's down a hundred from last month, so she's really knocked me out of the park, and we'll get her some backup, but. As we move into the, uh, Business License Standardization Act, we've got a resolution later that, later on tonight. Amber, you'll be seeing Amber some more, but I just want to introduce her, and I wish you guys know what a good job she's been doing, that she came up with. Thanks, Amber.
So, Mr. Left is outside trying to help.
I, I do have one answer, a bit of an answer to one of the things, if it's helpful. Marinus Kay actually did a moratorium for the last two years, not last year, Marinus Kay. There's two years of data, which actually indicates, at least in that environment, that they actually made more money, the homeowners, after that struck, because people are coming in now that want to have that and have that. I mean, frankly, he has the data that states that this is why they did it. The properties then went from four-something to five-plus right now. So, I think that's where the teasing out of what has to happen to the economic impact to those homeowners, just to, to that point. And that's a resource, and he has said he would give all that to the commit, uh, whoever.
Okay, so let's move over to eat. We've got a few minutes to talk about requiring mobile vendors to have restaurants or porta-potties.
So, we're skipping the RFP?
Well, Eric's outside.
Cool.
And, no, no, I'm just saying Eric's outside, and we can come back to the other, we have time. I, I want to get to the mobile vendors, just, you know, that's been a question.
Yeah, yeah.
So, let's talk about that for a while and see, uh, I know some of the businesses think that they should have to have a, or, or at least whoever owns the lot, if I own the lot and I, and I rent it for four or five, I mean, I could squeeze in legally mobile vendors and out if it is a lot or have to pay for whatever, but that's, that's purely up to this business.
I agree with that point. My only concern is, and I like it a lot more of having one per lot than one per vendor, because I just don't want to see porta-jons all over the place, because that, we know it happens late at night, you know, in the weekends, right? You get a bachelor party, walking down the road, and next thing you know, you're getting a four to five tip over porta-jons in the morning. And almost is there a way to make it to where they're not just like the most basic of basic porta-jons? It needs to be something that's, that's visually, something safe, I mean, I'm just.
The county park did, where you actually build a structure around, they slid in.
Yeah, 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 something, something like that would be like more per lot, because really, you're only looking at.
Yeah, one per lot.
One, you're looking at what, one, two, three, like, four? One on Center Street, I think, and maybe three on Ashley, something like that. I mean, just, nothing that's too, you know, nothing that makes it cost prohibitive to have some of the vendors, they all only might go out of bounds, but at least something that's just more than, some sort of structure around it, so it's just not a basic porta-jon sitting on a slant that you see on construction sites. You know, that, that kind of thing just, it's, it's very, very poor to eyesight, very, very poor visually.
Like, you could just say, you know, if you're a lot owner and you're, you're recent to portable vendors, then you have to provide a structure with a complete, you know, porta-jon inside, well, then you're gonna have to pay to get it cleaned out every day.
Yeah.
Or whatever that, however that's.
I mean, if, I mean, if they have one vendor on the lot, then I'm not really too concerned, but, you know, I can tell just from firsthand experience that the lot across the street with four vendors on it, we get, we get their people to come over and use our bathroom, and probably be like, whoa, 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 our, we have one bathroom at Folly, but like, it's, it's busy with, with our customers and our staff. We can't, not unless they're your customers, but you can't just come over all the time and, and use it. Plus, water is expensive on Folly Beach. I mean, every, I want to put a pay toilet in.
Who, who govern?
Twenty-five, twenty-five shit, Stan wanted to say.
Who would govern that, and this, I'm not saying the great, it's a design and review of football, but who would literally govern and decide that's reasonable? That's, you, you think?
What you mean, what's?
Well, staff or design.
With staff.
Staff or design review board, for instance, if it was a built structure.
I would think staff has like three conceptual drawings of like, okay, these are what we're talking about, like examples, and you can pick one of these, something similar.
And they would doubt, to be fair.
Yeah, definitely staff, I would think, not people.
Where would you propose you, like, like I said, the one that, they had it at the county park at Alpam, too, I seen it there, and it was, you know, it's a nice little structure that they slotted into, and that's, so it's kind of like.
So, the staff.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, but an outhouse is something that can't, can't sort of slant it, it doesn't.
Yeah.
It doesn't take away from the visual experience. When you drive on, y'all, we work so hard on making Center Street the gateway to the community. I don't want a gateway, when you first turn on a gateway, you see slanted porta-jons everywhere, like it's a construction site.
So, it's a staff.
And they won't turn them over. Well, I mean.
We can implement it in a number of ways. We could let the DRB approve five templates, or we could just say, screw it like an outdoor shower, with a six-foot tall solid wall.
I, I don't even want to get DRB into it. I think you guys can handle it, because we all know, just for the most basic of designs, it's fine.
I mean, let them approve the basic designs and then give it to the vendors, and they'll build this, and that's fine. I mean, it could be something as simple as an outdoor shower, you know, a six-foot tall wooden wall, three sides.
Right.
Something else to consider, we do this at our festivals, are the hand sanitation stations, so potentially requiring those as well with the porta-potty?
Most of your, if you get it nice enough.
Is it in.
Got all different levels. Most of them are, unless you get the most economical porta-jon construction site bathroom you can get. They've got hand sanitizers or hand wash stations inside of them.
I think that's your requirement, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have that.
A bathroom, a bathroom with a hand wash station or a hand sanitizer station of some sort. You know, because, yeah, that's, I don't really want to shake hands with anybody that's, that's not.
How do you guys feel about, instead of, you know, a porta-potty letting the property owner demonstrate an agreement with an adjacent or nearby business for their customers to spend?
Uh, you know, that sounds nice, and I like that idea, but I don't, I'm, who's to say that their customers aren't gonna know, like, unless they have a, a, a big sign, just an understanding, their customers aren't gonna know that. Oh, you're supposed to go over to John's house over here on Second Street, use the bathroom, that's, that's too far away. It needs to be something, you know, right next door. I mean, the only thing I can see is, you know, if, if Ellie wanted to let him use their bathroom, but he's not gonna do that. I don't see any business sharing their bathroom. I mean, that, that's how valuable these, these things are at this point, this time of year. I mean, you can't tell you the amount of plumbing business is actually in my budget.
I can't imagine, I can't imagine a business saying, yeah, well, put my customers in somebody else's.
Yeah.
It's just at his point in time.
These food trucks would take their customers and everybody else too, the public. An idea, I mean, it's kind of off the wall, what if, I know, um, Second East, we've got those portable ones that we bought. Uh, they're pretty nice, and I know they make small ones, and we have the sewage capabilities, I believe, in at least the two big parking lots. What if we, uh, went to the property owners and asked them to, you know, have some space to where the, the city would fund outhouses or these bathhouses?
I could answer that question, Mr. Hall.
But I'm not, I'm not done yet, hold on. And charge, like, in Europe, they have, you know, quarter or by app, where you could charge money to make up the funding for the outhouse and maintenance.
Sure, so I can use my bathroom.
Well, and, and they may, but at least it gives them an option, but it gives the public option, because the city definitely needs more bathrooms. And if we have the land available, we install them as a city-sponsored event or a city-sponsored project, uh, you know, so anyway, go ahead.
I, I was gonna say, we don't really have the land available, because that land is.
That's, yeah.
It's their land, but I'm saying.
Bill Hall was still alive, you would not put one on his place because he basically looks money, our bucket goal.
I understand, but, but I'm not, I'm, we're gonna put a outhouse, or we could put one that's smaller, a little bit bigger outhouse, may take up one space.
I like, like the concept, and just do like a mobile vendor fee to kind of pay for it all, but where are you gonna put them? That's, that's the thing, we don't have, we don't have spots to put something like that. I agree, that would be a more ideal scenario, is if we just built, say, two of them in two different spots and did like a mobile vendor fee to pay for it. But where you gonna put it?
Well, I mean, that's, I don't know how big they are, I mean, uh, you know, you gotta have room for, a porta-potty is gonna take up a space anyway, I don't care how big or small it is, it's gonna take up one. If you have a, a mobile unit that's, this big, one unit, it could be, uh, multi-sex, men, women, and diaper-changing facilities, is it?
To, to, to piggyback upon what, uh, Councilmember Grooms was saying, and what if in response to this, the property owner. And what if in response to this, the property owner said, I'm on the sewer line, I'd like a tie-in. I'll build a small structure to accommodate the restroom in lieu of having a portage. Will you allow me to do that?
He's, he's gonna be cheaper getting a portage than joining the sewer.
Yeah, I don't know all the economics of that, but over time.
Because you're not gonna have it there, I mean, and here's another thing, is, is it a year-round deal? If they build a structure around it, it needs to be a year-round deal.
Vendor on-site, they would have to provide.
As long as there's a vendor on-site, that's a great way of putting it, because while most of these guys have twelve-month leases to satisfy their mobile vendor ordinance, they're not there twelve months out of the year. I mean, they're really, they're only there for six, so that, that's a great way to put it, because even the structure's there, that's how, that's how they, they kind of save, but we only get it for the high season. Because then they can just build a structure and take the portageon out.
Yeah.
And not tie it to sewer, because tying it to sewer is gonna be way too expensive for them.
I'm not suggesting, um, that we mandate that, what I'm saying is we should be.
Well, if we just put it in there.
If they wanted it, would we allow it?
Well, if they do that, they gotta, they gotta make sure they got running water, so they have to, they have to cut into the water line, so they have a water bill.
Yeah, that's a, that's a lot, water and sewer.
Well, the lot across the street from you was a functioning restaurant, so those lines are probably in place.
Oh, the, the lines are there, but if you start paying for running water and a sewer bill, your, your portageon bill will be a lot cheaper than that. And it wouldn't be a twelve-month, you know, you could tailor, if you said, just like you said, as long as you have a vendor on your lot, you have to have a bathroom there. So you have the structure there, but you don't have to pay twelve months of a, of a portageon fee, you pay for six months of it, and then you just, there's no vendors on your lot, you get rid of the portageon.
Could we use the easement on the lots?
It's city, it's city property.
But the problem is, a lot for talking about, you know, where's the easement, most of those easements are already heated up, it's.
You know, pedestrian paths or something.
Pedestrian path.
I've done it on the sides of the lot. Not in, on the front.
Setbacks?
A ten-foot.
Setback, yeah.
Uh, the setback, well, the setbacks are still private property.
Yeah, they just can't build, they can't build on it, but it's still their property.
Do they park on them?
They're allowed, yeah.
Yeah, they can park on them.
I think they do. That's supposed to open before the whole pier is completed.
It was satisfied.
Oh, right, it was like Mayus Sixteenth left the herd, but I don't know if there's still no track, but I see where he got their whole thing built around up here. He had the, uh, railings and all built all the way around it.
Still incorporate public restrooms there, that'll.
Well, it will.
Yeah, some of the.
The, the restaurant's not opening this year at all.
All right, so Kay says it comes with a final inspection, so whether.
I think last week they held for some finals, I don't know what finals they have left to do, but it, it should be in the coming weeks, but here it's open. Circling back to your parking, um, establishing a, a permanent restroom for like an accessory use wouldn't be allowed for plug-point management. That whole thing, like, that's why we have mobile restrooms, so we're back to the same, so like, you would have to go to a portage. You wouldn't be able to like tap into the sewer line and establish.
A permanent, right.
I love definitive answers, thank you.
I just have one more thing as far as, I have to admit, some of the nicest restroom bathrooms have been at Olympics, have been at certain concerts, I would believe. And downtown, when we, when we started the food and wine, when we started international festivals, Marion Square did not have, like, anything at all to do that. And there is an amazing amount of options out there to fit Folly's style or, or aesthetic. So, um, and there was nothing there in Marion Square when I first came. And we had to develop all that with food and wine for, uh, uh, only foods.